Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Martha, would you please call roll?
Andre?
Here.
Footlick?
Here.
Gibbs?
Here.
Grossdair?
Here.
Krang?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Danenberg?
Yep.
Weber?
Here.
Okay, next on our agenda is a public hearing. We don't have a public hearing tonight, but we do take public comments, and we don't have any at this point. They'll come later in the agenda, and we'll announce that at the time. So if you have any questions about anything going on in the city, we'll take those at that time. Under special presentations, we do have one. That's from the Consolidated Fire District Number Two, Jeff Scott.
Just to update you on the quarterly and the year-to-date numbers for City Mission, we had, this quarter, we had one building fire, had a $7,000 fire loss, ran 153 medical calls and other type of help calls, first-aid calls, and for a total of 222 calls combined with everything else. Year-to-date, we had, again, one building fire compared to four last year, and the four last year were about $178,000 loss. So it's a quite a considerably less amount this year, so that's good. 326 medical calls last year to 286 this year. I don't know why the increase, but it is a pretty substantial increase there. 474 total calls this year to 433 last year. So call volume's up just a little bit. Don't know why, but it is. So, that's all I have for you. Do you have any?
Great. Does council have any questions of Jeff? Thank you for coming, Jeff.
Oh, thank you. Yes, sir.
I have a question, I just got a comment.
Okay.
You don't know why. Hell, we're getting older.
Well, it is becoming an older population. That is true. We all are.
Thanks for coming, Jeff.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Next on our agenda is a consent agenda. And I think they have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move the City Council about the consent agenda as published items 3A through 3E.
Is there a second?
A second.
Question, John? John?
Hey, Mayor, I'd like to remove 3E, please.
Okay.
I would like to remove 3C, please.
Okay. Any others? Martha, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossdair?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Danenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Okay, items 3C and 3E have been removed, and they will be addressed later in the agenda. We'll do our community committee reports now. Have those in your packet, and there's no action required, but we have updates from various committees on the business portion of the meeting. We'll get to that. So, next we'll move to public comments, and this is for the public at large. Are there any comments from the public regarding items that are not currently on this agenda? If so, please come forward. None being heard, we'll move to the next action item. Okay, we have one item from the Planning Commission tonight. Mr. Riverola, would you please introduce this item?
Sure, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This item that's before you this evening is preliminary development approval for the construction of a transit center to be owned by Johnson County Transit at 5251 Johnson Drive. This item has been before the Planning Commission for review of the preliminary development plan and the final development plan, and it received an approval, vote of seven to nothing unanimous vote at the Planning Commission on the final development plan. Now, there is a contingency that this, that the preliminary development plan be approved by the City Council this evening. Our code does require that the City Council approve the preliminary development plan. The final plan is approved by the Planning Commission. It is in the final plan where you find a lot of the details about the construction of this particular facility. In the preliminary development plan, basically, we're looking at things such as the use and the general location of the facilities to be constructed at this particular location. There are, Sean Straight, Mr. Sean Straight with Johnson County Transit is here to answer any questions we may have about the operations at this facility, and also Mr. Brian Scoville with the City of Overland Park, who is a project manager with the Tiger improvements that are funded, that are funding these particular improvements. So, there is a recommendation from the Planning Commission for approval of the preliminary site development plan at this time.
Okay, and I understand on a legal level, too, that the county ultimately does have the right to move forward with this property. They do have access to the property, and we don't really have to even go through that process. It's just a formality, and they've been working with us cooperatively. Is that correct, Martin?
That is correct.
And we also have a letter in front of everyone from Johnson County Legal Department that further substantiates that. Perme?
No.
We don't have?
Just?
Just, I have it, sorry. We do, if anybody wants to see it. It's basically, the legal department of Johnson County substantiating the process for moving forward with that property. That being said, do I have a motion?
No.
Good question. Go ahead.
Mr. Riverola, I believe in addition, Overland Park isn't included in this project?
That is correct. There are improvements that are proposed as well within the city of Overland Park. At the northwest corner of the intersection of Johnson Drive and Row, there is one transit shelter that's going to be built at that location. There's also going to be some extension of the sidewalks to connect to the neighboring sidewalk system. So there's also improvements within the city of Overland Park as well.
Other local communities?
The city of Overland Park, city of Mission, and the city of Overland Park. That's it. As part of this grant, however, there's 10.7 million dollars that have been designated to Johnson County. The overall grant is in the amount of 50 million to the Kansas City region, and there are multiple other partners within the Kansas City region.
John?
Martin, it states in there, and you mentioned that 10.5 million is what's allocated for this project, right?
It's 10.7 within Johnson County.
For, okay, Johnson County, because I was going to say, that also includes a larger portion of a project on Metcalf Avenue, too. So how secure is it that the county is going to pay this, and Mission is not going to come up with having to fund any of it, since it is basically a county project?
The county is the recipient of the grant, and it is fully funded, and there are no local dollars whatsoever for construction of any of these facilities within the city of Mission or within the county.
So, in other words, you're saying that regardless of what happens, we will not be drug in the pen for something?
Correct.
Okay. I want that in the minutes, too, please.
Any further discussion? Could I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move the City Council uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve the preliminary site development plan for the construction of a Johnson County Transit Center at 5251 Johnson Drive.
Is there a second? Martha, could you call the question, please?
Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossdair?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Danenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
Martha, now let's move to our committee reports. First is Finance and Administration. Sue, Grossdair?
Are we going to pick the 3C first?
We'll go for 3C first.
The discussion of the fire prevention and fire control.
No.
The person that removed it, we need to address the issue at hand.
At the committee meeting, I spoke very eloquently, and I continued to speak earlier about my objection to not having the fireworks professionally executed. And I object to the service of driving some of the vehicles, each with their vehicle filled with fireworks restored to their current condition.
Any further discussion on 3C? Martha, could you call the question?
We have an emotion.
We have an emotion. My apologies.
Madam President, I move the City Council to approve the withdrawal of chapter 205 Fire Prevention and Protection as it relates to coverage expeditions for the date of Saturday, July 9, 2011, City of Mission family at the Grandmore Park, and approve the purchase of fireworks in an amount not to exceed $500.
Second.
Martha, would you call the question, please?
Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
No.
Nay. Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossdair?
Nay.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Danenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
Okay, the next one on it is the HVAC lease for the Savannah County Junior Community Center. The City Council previously authorized staff to proceed with the acquisition of a maintenance program with control system to replace the existing HVAC control system at the community center. Staff has been working with integrated controls and solid financials to compare the necessary documents to execute the lease. The proposed ordinance authorizes an asylum lease agreement for this new HVAC control system. Therefore, Madam President, I move the City Council to approve the ordinance authorizing the City of Mission finances to enter into a lease purchase transaction in proceeds of which will be used to pay the cost of acquiring certain equipment for use in the city. The documents connection there were.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Martha, call the question, please.
Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossdair?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Danenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
Okay, I think, Mr. Scanlon, please tell me if I'm out of order. I think we need to go back and address 3E as well. Is that correct? It's on you? Okay. Okay. Then we'll move to the next committee report, which is Susie Gibbs, Community Development.
Okay, I'll do 3E first. That concerns the Council Policy 125, revealing annual street maintenance program. Madam President, I move the City Council to approve the Council Policy number 125 relating to annual street maintenance program.
A second.
Any discussion?
John, hold on. Well, I just, I just, you got a maintenance program, and if they're going to live by a program, with the condition that our city is presently in, is not the best. And we are in dire need of funding, too. So, I just can't see making a schedule and say, "We're going to follow this schedule" regardless of what the hell the rest of the city looks like. And I know the intentions are good and everything like that, but when it's approved by the governing body, and they say, "Well, you approved this, we can do it," there's some pretty bad places out there that need fixing. And that's the reason I wanted to pull it, because I don't support it. We got to get straightened up a little bit on the city as a whole, and then get our budget taken care of before I think we start looking at a maintenance program like that. And I know it'll help down the long run, but in the long run, we might have a different situation come up.
Martha, would you please call the question?
Sure. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossdair?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Danenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
I have item 6D, All-Avenue Change Order Approval. The proposed work included in change order number one is for additional subgrade separation and rock to repair unstable areas throughout the all-avenue project, and six inches of concrete attaching at marginal areas north and south of Shiny Mission Parkway for a total change order amount not to exceed $17,000. This will increase the total project contract to $30,817,820.55. Upon approval of this change order, the forest account budget of over $70,000 will remain with any unused portion of this account credited back to the City of Mission at project completion. Major items which could cause this account to be depleted have been completed. So major additional costs to the projects are no longer expected. Therefore, Madam President, I move the City Council to approve change order number one, All-Avenue Project, in an amount of $73,000 for a total construction contract increase to $30,817,820.55.
Second.
Is there discussion? Martha, call the question, please.
Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossdair?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Danenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
Item 6C is 2011 Slurry Seal Program bids. The Slurry Seal Program will be focused on preserving the streets that are already in this condition and extending their useful life. This year's program will seal or microseal just under 13 lane miles of street with the work being performed in late July and early August. Vance Brothers is the only vendor on this project, although efforts were made by staff to reach out to other companies in this region. The contract for the 2011 Slurry Seal Program is in an amount not to exceed $163,169,687.8 cents. Therefore, Madam President, I move the City Council to approve a contract with Vance Brothers for the completion of the 2011 Slurry Seal and Micro Seal applications to the city streets as itemized in an amount not to exceed $169,687.8 cents.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Martha, please call the roll.
Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossdair?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Danenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
Okay, I have item number 6D, that's 2011 Mill and Overlay Program bids. The Mill and Overlay Program will be focused on bringing those streets with damaged surface asphalt and on the cusp of falling into complete disrepair back up to quality ratings. This is a critical component of the city's efforts to repair the aging street infrastructure. The 2011 program will mill and overlay about three miles, three lane miles of street, and the contractor has a 60-day window to perform the work after the contract has been signed. American Marking and Paving received high marks for their work with the references contacted by staff, and our quoted price was $6.75 per square yard for a total contact amount not to exceed $144,483.27. Therefore, Madam President, I move the City Council to approve a contract with American Marking and Paving LLC for the completion of the 2011 Mill and Overlay Program construction in an amount not to exceed $144,483.27.
Second.
Do we have discussion on this item? John?
I got a question. When we start this process, this mill and overlay, is the council going to be advised on what streets we're going to pick, or is it going to be totally turned over then to Public Works?
Well, we've gotten a map in the last two weeks. Martin, did you have an idea how we were going to structure that?
I believe I have a copy, in case anyone else wants to see it. For clarification's sake, the streets included in this program were part of the bid that went out, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, these have been known for months, which streets we intend to mill and overlay. Thank you.
I might add, the Council Policy, the Council Policy number 25 states that the Public Works Department will bring a preliminary street maintenance plan before the council in the year preceding, which of course will be planned for this one, but so in the next couple of months, you can expect to see a report from Public Works at the Community Development Committee meeting on the 2012 program.
Well, one of the reasons, I got several phone calls on this project over there, because as mentioned, and everybody got a email, and I got a personal letter from the gentleman, and he settled a death at 61st Street, head out here. I drove all three streets today. 61st Street, I wish to hell there was one street in my area as good as 61st Street.
61st Street isn't on the list.
Huh?
61st Street isn't on the list.
It's on, it's on this here, is what people think's on the list. And so, it says there, it might be a mistake, I don't know, 61st and Terrace is in atrocious shape, and I have to agree with that. I drove by there. And then 62nd Street, that's not too bad either. But, you know what? Here we are, we got Noll down there, we're taking care of that, and we're taking care of these two or three streets over there. It's time we spread this out just a little bit. There's four different areas in this city that need some of this stuff, too.
Unless I'm incorrect, I believe we got a breakdown of the streets priority-wise on the mill and overlay and the slurry, and we had, we had opportunity to call in and ask, because I know my street was one of them, and I was questioning why it was being done. But, I mean, I think, they're pretty well spread out. Mr. Scanlon, you want to address that?
If you just look at the mill and overlay, Maple, Noll Avenue, Reed's Road, I believe all those are in Johns Ward, 62nd Street, 61st Terrace, 60th Street, number four is that section that connects Shiny Mission Parkway to where we've redone Row, and then Rowland Drive, if you remember, was redone as we did improvements, strong one improvements at the Gateway Site. So it's just that last piece that needs to be taken care of, with the exception of Shiny Mission Parkway. So, on the mill and overlay, there's actually a higher concentration around the script pro campus, and there's just longer runs that are in Countryside.
And also, one of the clarifications, John, that I was given is, my street, for instance, which is between 57th and, 57th and Riggs and Johnson Drive, is, it may not need support right now, but if they got to it now, it may alleviate any kind of improvements for the next five to 10 years, and they're trying to catch some of those streets now at a lower cost.
Let the rest of them then, they can catch them now in their last five, 10 years, and we got stuff now that's just really getting tore up. Out there. Bad.
To clarify, Debbie, your street is scheduled, I believe, for a slurry seal this year, and right now, what we're talking about is mill and overlay, which is a much more expensive treatment. That's the type of treatment we're trying to avoid having to spend on streets like yours.
Right.
I also would like to say, Will's mentioned it, and I'll say it again, if we're going to do a mill and overlay job, we need to fix the gutters, too, at the same time. That's a must, as far as I'm concerned.
Jackie?
We have to.
It's on this topic. Can you give your name and address, please?
I am Jackie Gamison, and I live at 5770 Terrace. And it is 61st Terrace that is in deplorable shape.
Agreed.
We have had tremendous top-surface failure due to the heavy equipment that has traveled the street in the last three months. The streets in Countryside were due to be resurfaced almost seven years ago, based on the plan that Mission accepted when Countryside was incorporated into your city. And we ask that, at this time, that you give special consideration to the fact that this is long overdue, and if nothing is done now, I don't think we will have much but a gravel road in there in the next year.
You're not alone, believe me. You're not alone.
I know I'm not alone, but I also want to say, it is 61st Terrace, and I think if you drove that, you saw the surface failures.
I did, at that intersection where that other street comes down and it goes across.
I know that Noll has been taken care of, but as a result of Noll's work, we suffered a great deal of loss in Countryside on both 61st Terrace and 62nd Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you for your note, Ms. Gamison.
Any further discussion on the mill and overlay? Hearing no further discussion, Martha, please call the question.
Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossdair?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Danenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Susie. Next on our agenda is unfinished business. Does anyone on the council have unfinished business? New business? I know Susie has something.
If you remember correctly, last City Council meeting, I said that if I started thanking people for everything they did for Spirit of Mission Days, that I would be remiss and forget somebody, and naturally, I did forget somebody. And did it have to be Mike Scanlon?
Yeah.
So, on behalf of Spirit of Mission Days and the Coin Hunt and Capitol Federal, Mike, thank you so much. That was really a phenomenal event. Everybody loved it, they're still talking about it, and I still think we ought to go down to Capitol Federal Lot and see if we can't find the coins. I bet there's some down there.
I'm sure there is.
I know. So, thank you very much. It was very well received, everybody loved it.
Any other new business? Next, we have the mayor's report, and there is no report. I just want to send Laura's regards. She rarely misses a council meeting, and if it weren't for something on a, on a business level, she wouldn't have missed this one, so I apologize for you guys having to have me. Lauren, you can't talk, remember? John, you have a question?
Mike mentioned the new, we got the deal in here somewhere, the new committee assignments.
Okay. And you just received those? I think they just came out this afternoon. Does anybody have comments or questions on the current committee assignments? City Administrator's report?
I have three items. I talked with Karen Falk this afternoon. They're completing the survey results, and hopefully, we'll have a preliminary document for the City Council to look at at next week's work session, next Wednesday at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. Curb replacement is on schedule to be completed by the time we get to the mill and overlay, which I think is what John was talking about, and I'm sure Will's familiar with it, because I think we've been on Reed's the last three days, so if...
It's not. I'll have to talk to you about that.
Yeah, and we've, as, the hope is that we, every year, we'll get a year ahead on curb replacement, so that, once you're a year ahead, you're working on the next year's plan in terms of mill and overlay and getting those curbs replaced. The last item is Budget Seminars, your next Monday and Tuesday from 7:00 to 8:00 PM at the Community Center. And again, we will have a budget work session next Wednesday, the 22nd, at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. I've received several questions about the budget seminars, in terms of the information that will be shared. The first 10 to 15 minutes is all I'm going to talk. It'll be the five-year forecast in terms of five years, how much can we anticipate in revenues, where are our revenue estimates, and then a little bit about the Kansas state budget process, which we have to also fit inside of. One of the criticisms that we heard last year is that some of the public meetings, it appeared to people were predetermined in that we came in and very well organized, we had boards, we had an agenda, we kind of followed it, and the feeling was there wasn't a lot of time for people to have their input. And so, what we're trying to do this year is to take into account that criticism, and so for that remaining 45 minutes, and if it lasts longer, that's fine, to allow the public to share whatever concerns, ideas, or thoughts they have about our budget, and to let that discussion be driven by the people that are there. So if there's something that, in particular, they want to talk about, or they're concerned about, or they have ideas about, I think, in talking with the mayor, she doesn't want to let anybody presuppose that we have the answer, and that if there are people in the community that have better ways or better ideas and thoughts about how we should do the business of the city and the citizens, that we should be willing to listen to those. So it will be free-flowing, this will be non-traditional.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No?
May I ask a question?
Sure. Do you want to come up and tell your name and address? Please?
Adjust the camera, Mr. Nichols.
Adjust the camera, Mr. Nichols.
My name is Bill Nichols, 1160, 51st 61st Street. I appreciate the two days of these hearings next week, but I believe we probably need to release, or you probably need to release, all the facts, all the figures at least, on what we're going to talk about on those two days. I know they're probably on the website, but make it easy for us to understand what we're talking about before we go in, because that was one of the criticisms before, and that's one of the criticisms I'm getting, from putting it on the website as for your request. I'll put it on my website.
Yeah, we can link right to that five-year forecast graphic that shows sort of what our estimate is.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, and thank you for recording things. Appreciate it. With nothing further said, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for hosting.